America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you rap the gavel, then I come to attention.
Oh, okay. I'm not big on rapping gavels, but yeah, thank you, Jeff. Next, we have, as routine business, we have item number one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. If it's okay with you, I'll just read them. Is that okay?
I think that's perfect.
All right, well, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna do that today. Approval of the county commission minutes from April 8th, 2014. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $453,355.72.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four are reports, A is the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of March 31st, 2014. That's available for review at the auditor's office. And then B is the juvenile detention center statistics report for March 2014. That also is available in the auditor's office. Then personnel actions. We have a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move routine action. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. And I believe there was a second by Commissioner Benega. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item six are applications for abatement. Mr. Halseth is coming to the podium. A is City of Crooks RDID 19899 for the 2013 property taxes in the amount of $571.26. Mr. Halseth, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This City of Crooks had purchased property last year and is now requesting the abatement of taxes for the time that they owed it in 2013.
Are there any questions for Mr. Halseth?
Move for approval.
Great. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item B is City of Sioux Falls RDID 11862 and 11863 and 11864 for 2013 property taxes in the amount of $2,578.37. Mr. Halseth.
Good morning again. This is a request from the City of Sioux Falls after they had purchased a couple houses last year in the, these are the taxes that were not owed by the City of Sioux Falls. They're requesting an abatement.
Thank you. Other, is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second from, motion by Commissioner Benega, second by Commissioner Barth. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halseth. Item seven are notices and requests. We don't have any. Eight are planning and zoning notices. We don't have any. We do have two petitions for compromise of lien, and oddly enough, even though I'm vice chair, I am the lien commissioner. So I'll be doing these briefings for the commission, and we'll see if a suggested motion can be made. I don't know. Item A is DPNO number 76423 in the amount of $1,067.40. The applicant requests a compromise of the lien to the auditor's office. There is no real estate involved with this particular request. The lien is in the amount of $1,067.40. It is for poor relief and public defender services. The lien runs from 2011 through 2014. The applicant incurred the liens in the amount of $480 beginning in June of 2011. Those liens were paid in full by December 2011, so we do have that. Additional liens were incurred after that date for public defender services in the amount of $1,111.40. The applicant has made a payment on that balance, bringing the total lien amount down to that $1,067.40. The applicant is on Social Security supplemental income, SSI, in the amount of $721 per month. The funds appear to be administered by, I believe, at Southeast Behavioral Health as kind of a representative payee situation. The applicant lists assets of $790 consisting of $590 in a checking account and 200 in a non-working vehicle. He lists liabilities of $1,956 consisting of this lien and money, of course, that he borrowed from his parents. The applicant is seeking a compromise of the lien in full with no further payments. He asks us to recognize that he has limited ability to pay with his Social Security disability income, and the fact he has been making payments towards the lien, the most recently, in the amount of $480. I'm going to suggest that we offer basically 50% on this lien. That would be, well, 567.40, and I haven't actually done the division yet, so it'd be, um, oh, $533.70. My, you're a soothsayer. She predicted. $533.70. I'll make that motion, or I can't make the motion because I'm the chair. I'll suggest that motion, but I don't know if anybody feels comfortable doing that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I might make that motion for you, but I just want to comment that some of the infractions that we have spent money on for this fellow occurred this year and late last year. I mean, here in March of 2014, there's been an additional charge to his account from the public defender, and maybe we need to wait a few months. We're not going to done this fellow out of his situation, and his, his income is so low, he's going to be on county assistance. I don't know if he's expecting a check from IRS for earned income or whatever, but I think maybe it's premature to settle this if he has continuing legal issues.
Yes, and I don't disagree with anything that you've said. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, it's said that it's for public, or poor relief and public defender, but all that was paid off, and this is strictly public defender costs. You know, these are not free lawyers, and, and I think we're pretty accommodating. If he must have paid 10 or 20 dollars a month, we, you know, we accept that in payment, and I don't believe that, that this is a valid request.
Kirsten?
Can I add something just briefly? From, from our office's records, I believe the last court case was actually a 2012 court case. The lien from those proceedings for public defender services, I believe, just weren't placed until March of this year. But just so there's clarification, I don't believe there's any outstanding criminal files, so.
I'd make a motion.
All right, go ahead and make a motion.
I move to deny the request.
All right, there's a motion to deny. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second, but I would make a comment.
Sure. Go ahead.
Again, it's just, it's public defender costs, and I, you know, I, poor relief, I understand, but public defender is an attorney. They've incurred a, you know, they're breaking the law in the first place, needed a public defender, and I don't believe, you know, he's got two deaths out, and there's no reason he can't be held accountable, even if it's diminished capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Barth?
I, I feel that he could bring this back to us after we see a clean slate for some time, and if he makes some small payments, I think we would be more friendly towards it.
Thank you. Commissioner Benega?
Excuse me. The only thing that I'd like to see on some of these applications, and it doesn't happen on all of them, but if, in fact, I know they're on SSI, but if they have an employment record, if we could see what that employment record is to see if frankly he's employable, because this doesn't really indicate if he's tried to find work, and frankly, if he could, that amount of money over a short period of time could be taken care of.
Good comment. So, I guess we'll just have to remember to remind each other, because once we have somebody from the county commission office to actually recall and remember that when they put the lien memos together, maybe we can get that information available from what Mr. Benega suggested. So, with that being said, we have a motion and a second to deny, and I don't think we need a roll call vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously to deny. Thank you. The next is on a recommendation from Haugian Associates for a compromise of lien. This is on DPNO 15274, and this is in the amount of $1,304.68. Once again, this is an individual that is currently owing money to Minnehaw County, and I believe the request is from Haugian Associates, is to release the lien upon payment of $500, which will be 38% within the next 15 days. Once again, the county has a lien against this applicant. It's been assigned over to Haugian Associates. The lien was for court-appointed attorney services, poor release, and public defender services. He has a strong payment history. At one time, the balance was as high as $3,764.68. He has made very small and highly consistent, regular payments to pay the lien down to its present value of $1,304.68. He is currently on Social Security. He has limited funds. He would like to pay off with a balance, the last payment being $500, and he asked that we accept this because of his limited ability to pay. This would be well over 50%. So I'm going to ask, is there a motion to accept the recommendation from Haugie?
There is.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
There's a motion and a second. Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
This party has made in excess of 100 payments towards his, towards his debt to us, and if that doesn't show good faith, I mean, I can't even, I, it's 120 or so, I think.
Yep.
So I, I think this person deserves some consideration, and I, I can trust the recommendation of our collection agency.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Benega, you wanted to make a comment?
The one thing that I noticed on this particular application is the fact that we're supporting him with medications and some other stuff, which generally doesn't appear by itself. Obviously, he has some issues that need to be corrected, but again, there's no employment history on this one, which always makes me a little nervous, because, not nervous, but I guess questioning whether or not there's an attempt to even find work. Generally, again, we get tax returns as part of the application, so I'm going to have tough times supporting this without that.
Understandable. So, why don't we go ahead and do a roll call vote?
Can we ask for Kelly?
No.
Benega?
No.
Barth?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes, so it'll have to pass, and hopefully, when Commissioner Heiberg gets back, we'll be able to reconsider it. All right, thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for public comment. This is a time and place on the agenda for anybody that has any non-agend item to come forward and address the commission. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring forward to the commission at this time? Anyone? All right, well, then, we're going to move on to our regular business agenda. Item number 10 is to consider a bid award for Project Minnehaw County 251 BR14, replacement of bridge structure, 50294070, located on 251st Street, spanning the west Pipestone Creek of Logan Township. Mr. Reeves, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Reeves, project engineer, Highway Department. We had another bid last week for this particular structure just to the northwest of Garrettson. We came forward with this about a month ago. It's a structure we described as a three-sided box culvert because of the bedrock in that area. Looks like we're still in a very good bidding season. We had four bids, very close and competitive bids, about $50,000 or $45,000 under the engineer's estimate, once again to Crane Construction from Slaton, Minnesota, which was also the low bidder of the one I came to last week. Talked to Crane, comfortable with, with these bids, and looking to have you accept the award.
Thank you. So, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Benega. Comments? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Next, we have item 11, authorized chairman to sign funding exchange agreement in the amount of $612,076.75 with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Mr. Reeves?
Good morning again. This is from Highway Superintendent DJ, who's not in town today, but this is something that's come forward and been more standard in recent years, I guess, with the, with the STIP money being able to be transferred into the general county, the highway fund, and then, and then when it's transferred into the highway fund, we will come back and ask for it to be transferred to the construction budget. The 612,000, 611,000 last year was budgeted toward the specific job, which is part of our overlay project, and we're just, and we need acceptance from the commission, or actually from the, from Commissioner Heiberg, actually, to let this go through.
Sure. So, once again, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
And there's a second. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Benega. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 12 is to consider a resolution to establish a temporary 45 mile per hour speed limit on a portion of 479th Avenue between 252nd Street and 254th Street in Edison Township. Mr. Zwieb? Is Dale here? Is Dale here? Well, is anybody here capable of discussing the temporary speed limit?
I can talk to him.
Okay, well, I guess you're front and center, then, Mr. Reeves. Sorry. It's the Jason Reeves Show. So, turning to item number 12, once again, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Reeves.
Thanks again. We've met with Eros, we at the County Highway Department, Shannon Schultz and I did, about two weeks ago, regarding the County Highway 121 bridges, which are going to begin construction on Monday, the 21st, which closes County Highway 121 from 122 to 130, which Eros has about a mile and a half of paved road that goes to their facilities off of 121 that they really cannot access from the south very well. They would have to go around, if you, like on State Highway 115, up to 130, which would be the county road going through Baltic, back over to 121, and then south to their facility. They have about 70% of their 300 vehicles per day come from the south, which would be the Sioux Falls area, and the township was part of this meeting, and, and there's a, so there's a gravel road, which would be one mile east of County Road 121, off of County Road 122, that would go north to Eros. It's a two-mile stretch of road, which is this section of 2, of 479th Avenue. We, we drove the road on our way out there. It's in fairly good condition right now, but the, the township is asking for a temporary reduction in speed limit. As we know, the standard speed limit on township roads is 65 miles per hour. They would like it lowered to 45 miles per hour, and have come forward with a, with their, their request. We at the Highway Department hesitantly support this request. We, it's a, it's an interesting scenario because of Eros. It's something we really don't feel like we have a lot in the area of the county with, with a, with 300 vehicles per day going to this facility, some of which are very nice vehicles as we are out there. So we don't know that a lot of them will be traveling on this gravel, but we, we think it's going to happen. We put out our, our newest toy that we have, which is a traffic counter out there last week, and on a four-day span, we had about an average of 25 to 30 vehicles per day on this section of road. We're unsure of what it's going to go up to, but we're going to put our traffic counter back out there. Probably not next week when the construction starts, but maybe the next week, as people kind of feel out where they're going to go and what they're going to do for the summer. We don't feel that reduction of speed limit is, we don't want to use it as a dust control or anything like that. We just feel like it's more of a safety item for the 300 vehicles per day, and how many of these may be using this route in this five-month span during construction, and then when the construction's done, the, the speed, the temporary speed limit goes away. So we do hesitantly support it. The township is requesting it, so we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Well, once again, this is a suggestion from the township, or one of our partners, so what's your pleasure? Oh, Commissioner Benega?
I wonder if the Sheriff's Department has any comments about the safety issues or concern about the speed limit with that change. Obviously, they're the ones that are going to have to enforce it.
Captain, I'm with the Sheriff's Office. I support the, the change because that roadway is gravel, and it's going to increase the traffic on that road, and I think that the slower speed will keep it more safe. My concern is with the upkeep, or the increased level of traffic that's going to break that road down at all, you think?
We did talk, we did talk about that at our meeting. Eros is aware of this. The township does have some concern with it. Their typical maintenance schedule, as in, or just blading the gravel road is about once every three weeks for this specific township. They have committed to moving that up to about a bi-weekly basis. Eros did suggest in our meeting that they would be potentially willing to buy some gravel for the, for this section of road. The township said they put about 100 ton of gravel per mile on a piece of road, which is very minimal for 5,000 feet of road. We're talking four trucks of gravel, so imagine trying to spread that out over a mile. It's not very much. So Eros has, has mentioned that, that they would potentially be willing to kick in some money towards some additional gravel because of the potential breakdown of the roadway. Like I said, when I drove out there a couple weeks ago, this section of roadway was in really good shape. I thought 55 miles an hour was a pretty comfortable speed on it, not washboarding, not loose at that point in time, so. But yes, the potential breakdown, there is potential for it, so.
Thank you. Jeff, you had a question?
Well, I guess I, I will support this, but I think maybe nine years ago, there was a fatal accident on this road, maybe two miles south of the Eros installation, where a couple that routinely went that way every day, you know, got T-boned or T-boned somebody and were killed. And, you know, that was at the old, at the current speed limit, and so it's already a bit of a hazard, and what about dust abatement? Is anybody going to put down some?
Um, there's been internal discussion on it, but there was no discussion at the meeting. It's an expensive proposition.
There's that chloride stuff or whatever it is?
Correct. Magnesium chloride. I believe it's a, I believe we figured it's about $13,000 to do this section of roadway, so we're, we're hesitant to commit to that right now. We'd like to just, we'd like to see what happens with the, with the breakdown of the road, with the dust. We are, we are aware of the fatal accident on there, and I believe on the, it's a mile south of that, because there's two miles in there.
Okay.
It'd be the middle mile that this happened at, and I believe the township said there are yield signs in the east-west direction right there. I think that were, that was based on that fatal accident, and there was brief discussion of moving that to a stop sign in the time being, but they, they didn't want to move to go down that road at this point in time, and as we're not totally willing to move down the road of, of buying calcium chloride for a township road at this time. That would be more up to them, in my opinion, right now.
And they're going to have an opinion if you put one drop of that on their road.
Yeah.
So anyway, Commissioner Benega, and then, did you have a question, Commissioner Kelly?
Well, yeah, on the chloride. I mean, we're causing the problem by closing the two bridges, by-
Correct. We aren't telling them to use this-
And I think we've got an obligation to help the township. I don't think they're prepared to do this. $13,000, we're talking, I can't remember what those contracts were, but they were a million dollars together, maybe.
A million dollars, correct.
So I, I think we should, I'll support the, the change, because I think the, the other issue is the head-on traffic. If you got them going 55, 60 miles an hour on gravel road, it gets a little frightening with some of those big pickups and stuff, so I'd go along with that.
Okay, Commissioner Benega?
Well, part of what Dick said about the speed limit and the crossing each other, so to speak, was what I was going to indicate, but the other thing is, is when you close these bridges, bridges, can you let us know if, I mean, there's a big difference between assuming 30 cars a day versus potentially 270 cars a day if 70% of them come from Sioux Falls. That's a big issue, so I think that it needs to be looked at again after the bridges' construction starts and those roads are closed, because we could have a significant traffic flow there.
I agree.
And some washboarding. When you start driving on those roads, you're going to get, but, but they're going to go bi-weekly for blading, so.
That was what they had verbally committed to, I guess, at our meeting with Eros, was moving it up to a bi-weekly schedule.
Well, and if, if the commission has any position one way or another on the calcium, you know, we can always extend a hand to our supervisors out there and see if they'd want to remediate that, but once again, it's their road, and they definitely have an opinion on what goes on their road, so maybe we'll let them know.
Well, there's nothing more frightening than coming down the road, even if you slow down, and a truck coming this way at you at 55 miles an hour, because no matter what, you're always going to have a little loose gravel there on the side, and I'll make a motion to approve the 45 mile an hour speed limit. It's just for one mile, is it?
Two miles.
Two miles. And as a temporary measure until the bridges are complete.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See, oh, go ahead.
Again, I'd like to have some sort of feedback after you have the traffic count done a couple weeks after the construction starts, because if it's 270 or 300 cars, I think even 45 could be too fast.
Mm-hmm. We can certainly bring that back.
One other thing is, and I know you don't like to put stop signs up, but perhaps at that mile road, a stop sign might be looked at pretty seriously, because yield signs, people slow down, they don't stop, and.
The other thing would be is the potential of what crop they might put in at that corner by the time Oc-, or not October, August comes around. If there is corn at that corner, and we're still getting 100-plus vehicles a day, that could become a more dangerous situation, too, with yield signs versus stops.
Is that our call or the township's?
Ah, that's more the township's call.
So you can just encourage them as well?
Correct.
Yep. Thank you. Great comments, guys. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we should discuss that calcium chloride issue a little bit further, like Dick's mentioned. I mean, potentially, we could offer to help the township, I mean, if 50/50 or something, you know, 300 cars and dust, I mean, wow.
Well, can you come back to us in a month with-
Yeah.
-traffic count?
I would, I would just, I would suggest that, I guess, as well, like I said, we'll take a look at what we get when we come back with that traffic count in a couple weeks and, and come back with a recommendation, I guess, and then we can talk about that.
If it's Armageddon, come back right away.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thanks a lot. Thanks, Jason. Okay. Next, we have item 13, Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Well, I guess I'll report for Cindy. Cindy and, of course, Ken McFarland are off to appear for a JDAI meeting, and that's the only reason she isn't here, otherwise she'd be here. So that's her report. Any other reports? Okay, let's go to item 14, new business. Is there any new business?
There is.
Okay, go ahead, Kirsten.
Thank you. Kirsten Katmyr from the Minnehaw County State Attorney's Office. On, yesterday, I guess it would have been, the county commission office was made aware of a request from the City of Sioux Falls. They are presenting Minnehaw County with a landlord letter of consent relative to the Health and Human Services Building. Of course, that's a county building, which the city has a long-term 99-year lease for use, the use of that facility. The city made us aware that they have a project for the remodeling, I believe, of, of part of that facility that's for the city's exclusive use, and as part of that availability of funds or grant for those remodeling funds, since Minnehaw County is the landlord for funds or grant for those remodeling funds, since Minnehaw County is the landlord for that building, that we need to sign off on consent, basically, for this remodeling project in our building. That is consistent with the joint cooperative agreement back in 2005 that we signed with the city for the construction and use of that building. This doesn't appear on the regular agenda, because frankly, the County Commission Office was made aware of it yesterday. It is not what I consider an item with great impact on the county from a legal perspective or from a practical perspective. It is just something that I believe legally requires county approval in order for this project to go forward, and the reason it's time-sensitive as well is that the city has, I believe, a deadline of Thursday to get approval from the landlord for this agreement, and so, as you know, as a part-time body, we meet once a week. We felt it appropriate to bring it to you under new business today, and I believe we have a representative from the city of Sioux Falls here to speak further about the particulars of the project, so.
Commissioners, good morning. I'm Alicia Colora, Assistant Public Health Director for the city of Sioux Falls. I appreciate your flexibility in adding this item to the agenda. As part of our cooperative agreement that was signed in 2005 and 2007, we do, we are co-located at 521 North Main, and as part of that site, we operate a federally qualified health center, Falls Community Health, where we serve about 14 patients a year. And several times a year, grant opportunities can come through the federal government for us to do various projects. Some of them may be quality improvement, capital projects, et cetera. The grant that we're here to speak with you about today is a facilities improvement grant, and some of you may be aware that when that building was first put together, the people that worked on that project had a lot of foresight into that that building may need to look a little bit different just to meet the changing business needs. And one of the examples is our medical records area. When we moved into that building, all of our records were in paper form, and so there's about 1,500 to 2,000 square feet of space that used to hold paper records, but now that that archival process is complete, it is space that can be repurposed for office space, et cetera, as well as our front desk. It was originally built to handle two people seated in that area, and if you've been through our building, you know that we can have a little bit of a bottleneck there sometimes. We have quite a demand on our clinic, and so the space completely within our front desk and our medical records is about 2,100 square feet of continuous space. We would like to remodel this space for, to increase office area, to increase patient counseling rooms, and to increase the capacity of our front desk area. Simultaneous to these needs, the federal government did release grant money this year, up to $300,000 for facility improvements, and as a federally qualified health center, we are able to apply for this. Section 8 of our cooperative agreement, as was mentioned, does allow for us to change space that's for our exclusive use, but we always do that very cooperatively and work within our building committee to make sure that the county is aware of that project. Lloyd has been a good partner with our city facilities team to make sure that we're not doing any projects that are negatively impacting the remainder of the users of that building. But I do believe, as was mentioned, to really be within the letter of the requirements, we should have your expressed commitment or support for the project, that you are aware of the project, that you are aware that it's federally funded project, and that this is happening. I would mention that this would not be a pass-through, so if we are able to secure this funding, the county would not have to accept any funds or work with any procurement or contracting procedures. We also do have similar precedents for projects such as this. It's just, it's when it's in our norm to try to take advantage of these monies as they come through, because it's such a benefit to our patients, and so we have similar agreements with our three school-based sites. We had to come, we had to obtain letters of support from Sioux Falls School District for the Hawthorne School, the Terry Redlin School, and for the Hayward Project. I would also note that in 2009, we completed a remodeling project within the very building that we're talking about today. There was some shelf space converted into three exam rooms, and at that time, the commission also supported with a letter this project. I will recognize that the requirements of the letter continue to get stronger from the federal government's perspective, but we do have some precedence in that federal fund has allowed for a remodeling project at 521 North Main back in 2009. And so, we would ask for your support and appreciate that you allowed the flexibility to have this added to the agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions that could be helpful to this process.
Are there any questions for Alicia this morning? Go ahead, Jeff.
Do we just need a letter of support, or what else would you need from us?
Sure. A letter of support was drafted based on a template, and it included the recommended language with just a call-out to the section of our cooperative agreement that discusses how changes would be made within the building structure for the exclusive use of the city.
Great. So, I guess I'll turn it over to the commission. Do we wanna-
Could we hear from Lloyd?
Oh, sure. Lloyd, you wanna comment on it?
Lloyd Olson, Director of Facilities. I've been working with the city health department on various projects, and this appears to be very similar in, to the path we've taken before when we've worked on these projects, so I have no concerns about.
Okay, thank you. And Dick, did you have a question?
Sure. Did you have any issues?
You have a question?
No, in fact, I'll just briefly summarize what I feel our approval obligates us to do under this, and it really isn't, doesn't really change our joint cooperative agreement in any meaningful sense. There is some language in, in the item that you'll see about potential defaults under the lease, opportunity to cure, things like that. What that basically means is now that there's a federal interest in this area, if the city were ever to default, which I don't see that ever happening, but if it were, the federal, we recognize that the federal government has an interest in that and allow them to cure it. It really doesn't obligate us to do anything out of the ordinary, what we would have done under a lease situation. The chances of that happening are nil, but just so you're aware that that is something that it commits us to do. Other than that, I have no legal concerns with signing off on this, so.
So, we have the letter?
Yeah, it's the first discussion.
Make a motion to talk to us as chairman to sign this agreement.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? Yep. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have an item of old business. Jeff, you wanted to bring something up?
I just was absent last week. I wanted to talk about the recent election that we had, and I've had a number of people talk to me about it. I know that persons living on the south side of Sioux Falls had miles to go to find a voting location. A fellow I talked to at my barber shop said he didn't vote. He went to vote at his regular location, and it was closed.
Right.
And someone told him he could vote anywhere, but no one told him where anywhere was.
So, he did vote. He voted.
He did not vote. And lastly, the nursing home my mom used to stay in, used to, is normally a polling place. It is, was not a polling place for this election, and I don't believe that 70 or 80 people who are there in walkers and wheelchairs found a way to get over to Gloria Day two miles west. It was a cold day. I don't believe that they were running buses. I really feel that they were disenfranchised on this, with this voting center, although they could vote anywhere.
Right.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring up those comments, and clearly, there were some lines in some places, and that's it.
Right. And you, Dick, do you want to say something?
No.
All right. Well, interestingly enough, after the meeting last week, a similar occurrence happened for me, Jeff, where someone commented about the fact that they wanted to vote. They were told that they basically couldn't vote at that location because they ran out of ballots, and they told them it was gonna take too long and to go to another location, and that's a real cause for concern, because you can't, and that's, at most, you should give them a provisional ballot. You can't send them away to vote someplace else. That's, but, you know, these are the rough situations. We want our elections to go off without a hitch, and certainly with the election coming up in June, I certainly hope that we get the rough edges sanded down a little bit so that we don't have people get confused about where to go. That's just unfortunate.
Perhaps we should ask the auditor to give us a report within the next three weeks of how the election went.
You know, and I guess that would be prudent if we, you know, remember the city is gonna do their own canvas, but I would like to, it would be nice if we were-
But we still ran the election and-
Right, and, you know, those voting centers, I know, was somewhat of a, I would call it heated for the commission. We take those elections pretty seriously, and I would like to be briefed on, on the upcoming election, because I know there'll be some pressure to go to the voting centers upcoming, but once again, remember, Lincoln County, they don't, they don't follow that. They have, they still go by precincts, and so obviously, I'd like to get some updating, and if not just for us, for the media that's here. So, you know, it takes a village to get the information out, so.
Just a clarification, in Ju-, well, it won't affect us, I guess, in June, but where Sioux Falls goes into Lincoln County, that's, it's gonna be a whole different product. The voting centers will not work for-
No, no, because Lincoln County does not follow the voting centers. They have precincts, so.
So, it's the auditor's decision whether we go to the voting centers in June.
So, if you live in North Lincoln County, and you live in the city of Sioux Falls, yeah, like our state's attorney here, we could, you could go ahead and theoretically be told you could vote at a voting center, but if you're south of 57th Street, that will not work. You have to go to your precinct. So, it's a mixed message that we're sending. So, you know, I think we need to have a consistent message. Am I wrong there, Kirsten?
No, I think that's true, so, you know, it's not a bad idea to get some clarification before that election comes up from the auditor's office, so.
Yep, all right. All right, so, thanks, Jeff. That was old business. We do have some items for executive session. We have contracts and legal briefings, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for contract and legal briefing.
It's my mess, my motion.
Your motion and message. It's the mess. Okay, we have a, we have a mess of a motion. Is there a second?
There's a second.
There's, there's two seconds. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why does Jeff have a-